Thank you so much for being here. I've done many, many budget presentations and I've never had more than four or five people come, so if this is what I have to do to get people to come to the budget presentation, we'll do it every year. All right, so you know, the first half hour is dedicated to meet the candidate panel. And what we're going to do, and this microphone does not come off, so they're going to have to speak loudly and we'll have to be quiet, but each candidate is going to get about two minutes to introduce themselves and just tell us a little bit about themselves and why they're running for the board. And then we're going to open it to you folks to ask questions, and each one will have just about a minute to answer each question because we want to keep it rolling a little bit. At 6:30, I'm supposed to start my budget presentation. We'll see where we are. If we need a couple of minutes, we'll keep going, but generally speaking, if we need to shut it down, we'll go. All right, so before we get going, all of the candidates are here except for one, Kerry Herbin. And he is out of town. He had a second grandchild, so he and his wife are visiting that grandchild. As we know, babies are the best things in the world, so we will forgive him for that. But he did tape a message to introduce himself, so I'm going to play it now, and this is how we'll kick it off.
Good evening. I'm Kerry Herbin. Thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce myself. Please know as you're watching this video, my wife and I are trying back to Laugville after a visit with our brand-new grandbaby number two. I am so excited about the possibility of serving on the school board. Through my work as chief operating officer at the hospital, I know the importance of relationships. Our focus each and every day is to deliver the highest quality care in the most compassionate way to our patients, residents, and teammates. This common purpose binds us and empowers us to do great things. My wonderful wife, 27 years, and I have four grown kids. We know how important education is. Each and every day, I think about Mr. Silver, my fifth-grade teacher. He had a profound impact on me. I think about how hard he worked to connect with me and each and every one of his students. It matters. It matters to me each day. As a potential school board member, my job is to do my part to create the environment where each teacher feels empowered to make that connection with each of their students. Please know, as a school board member, I promise to show up and do my part to listen and hear all points of view and bring us together to do great things. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to call me at 315-523-4570. My wife and I love Laugville. We love the school district. It is a critical part of our present and future. What a legacy it's been built. I welcome the opportunity to do my part to continue that legacy. Thank you so much for your consideration. Have a good night.
Okay, Kerry Herbin. Can't ask him any questions, but he did wish he could be here. So I'll just talk to you about how this is set up. Each, we set this up in the way that you'll see it on the ballot. So Kerry Herbin and Steve Fuller are both running for the seat that Tom Schneberger is vacating, president of the board for 18 years, so we'll miss you very much. And then next, Charlotte Sullivan and Stephanie Hauser Faust. And then last is Cheyenne Styria and Mike Young. So we'll just start with Steve and then we'll go down the line.
Okay, I'm going to stand up to speak so everybody can hear me. My name is Steve Fuller. I've been a resident in Laugville for 52 years. I'm an alumni of Laugville Academy. The reason I'm running for school board, two of them are sitting over at the table over here. I have five children. Two of them attended at one time at Laugville. I have three children that currently are at Laugville, kindergarten, first grade, and sixth grade. I teach my kids to give back to the community, and I want to lead by example. So that's the main reason why I'm running for the school board, is to give back, my part of giving back. And I feel like we need new leaders in our community. And I just feel like I need to step up to the plate and be one of those leaders if the public decides to vote me in. And that's really the reason why I'm running.
Hi, everyone. I'm Charlotte Sullivan. I grew up here in Laugville. I've lived here for almost all my life. A short time I lived in Texas, and a short time I actually lived in Ukraine when I was a teenager, so that was fun. My parents chose to homeschool me. I actually wanted to go to public school, but they had other plans. I attended Superstage and LISA and a lot of things that Laugville had to offer the homeschoolers. I'm married to my husband now for 12 years, I think. And we have two kids, and they attend Laugville right now. They've had a wonderful experience. It's been awesome. We've had wonderful communication with the teachers and the staff here, so no qualms there. My reasoning for running is because I think we need a fresh voice, and I want to be the voice for not only the teachers and the parents and the children, but for the bus drivers and the cafeteria workers and the librarians and just everyone that makes this school run. I would like to bridge the gap between our community and our school board that seems to be lacking. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Hauser Faust. I am a proud alumni of Laugville Academy, and I currently have two children that are in ninth and seventh grade. I still can't believe they're that old. They've had wonderful experience here at Laugville Academy, as did I. I am currently completing a term for Rebecca Kelly, who regretfully moved out of the district, and so the school board always has the option to appoint to fill that term, which is what they did. And I served for two terms on the school board prior to that. My reason for running is because school is the center of our community. School is where my children are all the time. School laid the foundation for me. And whether you're a taxpayer, whether you're an employee, whether you are a parent, school is the center of your world. And we want that to continue to be a positive environment, to be an academically rigorous environment, and to be an environment where people can feel at home. School's a wonderfully complicated organism, and I've had fun for the past seven years learning about all the different facets that make up a successful school.
Hi, I'm Cheyenne Styria. I know a lot of the faces in the room, and that's awesome. I started my career, I would say, in high school. I was kind of a right-brain, left-brain, weird kid, but teachers like Warren Linecker and Andy Capone steered me towards a math degree. And I graduated college with a math degree, business degree, got working in that field. And I think I bring a lot of professional skills to a position like this. But also, I think the math stuff, the numbers, the analytical, the reporting to a board, being on a board, that stuff is easy at this point, and I don't love talking about myself, so I don't read that as cocky. That stuff is easy. In the past five years, I've learned more about relationships and about how that has to come first before we talk about anything else, building a community, building people's skills, knowing in your gut what's right versus just knowing on paper what's right. I operate in this really cool bubble where I have this amazing family, I have a husband and two kids currently in the school system. One's just three, and she talks about how she's in school, but she's actually not yet. So I have this incredibly imperfect, but incredible family. I've got this incredibly supportive, uplifting work environment in Natalie Lewis, who's got the IDA, whatever you want to call us today. And I think I would love to be the conduit that can bring that to the school where it's uplifting, the teachers, the staff. If I can be a conduit to bring some of that uplifting, positive nature, as well as all the political, practical, my comment's up, professional skills, I would love to do that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Young. I'm running for reelection. I realize it's been a few years, 37 to be exact. When I was first elected in 1984, I was fortunate to be mannered by several members of the Board of Education, including Sally Lynch, Carol Peterson, Karen Reap, Julie Ginnard, and John McGrath, the man who I worked under and whose place I took on the BOSI's board three years ago. One of the lessons they taught me was the need to balance the needs and interests of the district, its children, teachers, staff, and taxpayers, with the resources of the community. Over the years, the voters have entrusted me to serve the best interests of everyone. Longevity, knowledge, experience, perspective, and commitment are the tools that I have used to ensure that the district is moving forward. I'm proud of the fact that over the years, Laugville has been recognized as an excellent institution of education, receiving numerous awards and right designations, including recently being designated as a high-performing school district. Last year, the district had a graduation rate for our general education students of 99%. Of all of our students, 93%. All this at the same time when we're considered a high-needs school district due to the large percentage of our families who struggle financially. The board has been successful, thanks to the resources provided by the community to both the district and the BOSIs, in guaranteeing our children the educational opportunities to succeed, whether that means going to be accepted into college or providing skills and training for our student-stable workforce. As an example, this school year, in conjunction with the BOSIs, we can offer the students a heavy equipment program. Next year, we hope to be able to launch a welding program for our students. We can't take our successes for granted. We need to keep working to provide the best educational opportunities for our students. This means up-to-date technology in our classrooms, including smart boards and scheduling, and same schedule replaces students' Chromebooks regularly. The board's responsibility to retain and obtain the most qualified teachers with enthusiasm and commitment is necessary to keep our standards high. In a county where our average per capita wage or income is just over $29,000, we're fortunate that our community offers the resources to provide us with a median salary for our teachers, which is second in the Jefferson Lewis BOSI's region. Over the years, the board has been able to accomplish this level of support while keeping our tax rate as one of the lowest in the area. When I first joined the board in 1984, our tax rate was $16.59 per thousand assessed value. This year, our tentative rate is 7.70. Over the next year, the district will likely face challenging issues, both educationally and financially, some of which will certainly be unexpected. So I hope the voters will keep their confidence in me to do what's best for everyone. I want to thank all of you for everything you do for the district and your vote on May 16th. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, so just some ground rules for those who want to ask a question. Please make sure they're professional and respectful. I'm sure that's not an issue here. We'll get through as many as we can. Everyone will have the opportunity to answer the same question. Even if you want to ask a specific candidate a question, you can do that, but everyone will answer the same question in order to make it equitable. So, go ahead, Mrs. McGlaughlin, you're first.
Okay, hi. Some of you know me. I know some of you. I know your dedication to the school, those of you who've worked in the school, and those of you who've served on the school board, and I really appreciate it. And some of you are former students, okay? I retired after 40-plus years of teaching, but I am still absolutely, incredibly concerned with educating our students. So my question, actually, I had hoped to find out more of the people who have not yet served on the board, so if, like, if Charlotte, you wanted to answer first, that would be fine. Critical race theory is one of those contentious issues. So my question is, how would you define the teaching of critical race theory? And what concerns do or would you have about relevant instruction in Laugville Academy?
My question, I'm not sure exactly how I would define it.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sorry. Let me stand up. I'm not sure exactly how I would define it. I've done some research on it, but I think being on the board and being more involved in actually reading through the curriculum and knowing exactly what it is would be very helpful. But I definitely think that when we're thinking of this, it's a big issue right now, right? Critical race theory. And I really think that it's, it's a, people are doing a "they/them" thing, and I really think we need to just have more unity on it. And I think, yeah, I think that's my answer.
So do you see it as a divisive issue?
I see that it can be a divisive issue, but I think that we need curriculum that teaches all aspects of our history.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I can go next since I'm next in line here, I guess. Critical race theory, I don't, I'm not academic enough to have a great definition of that, but my understanding is that generally speaking, critical race theory is something that's taught at a college level. It's certainly not being taught in the curriculum here at Laugville Academy. And while we look at curriculum, we also have administrators who are very capable of bringing us the latest research, knowing that we are experts in our field, and that isn't always education. That's why we rely on you all. We are, as a board, very concerned with accuracy, and we are very concerned that our students have the kind of environment where they are able to learn critical thinking skills, and they are also to learn, able to learn the social skills that can bring communities together and can combat racism, as we've known in our country.
I will just say that academically, I don't have a lot of knowledge in critical race theory. I would simply say that I would, you know, listen to those that, you know, that I can learn from, because I really don't know a lot about it myself. You know, I'm here to represent my community and to sit and listen and learn, and that's what I'm planning on doing, is listening to the community, listening to the board members, and learning to be a better person and to be able to serve my community better.
I think I've gone a lot of places and seen a lot of things that I definitely don't know everything, but I think part of the discussion always needs to be broadening our worldview and seeing things from different points of view and making sure that we're analytical of what's in front of us and making sure that's the whole story. So again, I think even experienced board members don't have the definition of critical race theory, and I don't think that's always the role of a board member. The role of a board member really is to be advisory to, really, the superintendent's the only one that reports to us. So as much as, as much as you get into the nitty-gritty, I think there's a line to be drawn there. The superintendent's reports to the Board of Education, and ultimately, they're feeding the suggestions to us, and we're providing input from our professional point of view.
As pointed out previously, this really is a theory that's taught more in college than it is in high school or in lower grades. Critical race theory, I think, is often mistaken for the teaching of history and understanding our history and being able to accept it. And I think we have to work through that. We can put any name we want on it, but the purpose of education is to learn, and we need to learn the differences, and we can have disagreements about what caused certain things, but facts are facts, and we need to interpret those and work with it. As far as critical race theory goes, I don't think it's something we're going to see in this high school level, unless maybe discuss someone in AP programs, but other than that, I don't think it's there. I do believe that we need to be honest with ourselves, but we need to be honest on both sides, and that's the issue why I have critical race theory at times, is that it seems to blame too many people, and I don't think that's the proper way to teach it. I can teach history to our students. We should be teaching, we're not perfect. Our country isn't perfect. We strive for perfection. We all make mistakes, and our predecessors may have made some. It doesn't mean that we are to be blamed for that. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Go ahead, Mr. Comet.
I guess this is kind of for the whole group. As you all know, I've been here much longer than I probably should be, in some people's opinion. I have a son that came through, is just about to graduate from LACS, and LACS currently is embracing the Character Strong program. So I guess it's a question for all of you. How will you personally reconcile your beliefs and perhaps biases regarding lifestyle choices of students and staff in the school and ensure that ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, and religion are reaffirmed and supported for all students?
I'll go first, I'm at the end. I believe that we have to be respectful for everyone's beliefs. I do feel that we've kind of come to a place, though, where some of these beliefs are a little out there. I don't know whether I believe in some of those, but I believe that you have to be respectful in what people believe in and what their lifestyle is, and we have to accept everyone. I'm the kind of person that likes to, you know, reach out to people regardless of who they are, and I think that's important for us to do as a community, is to be there to support everyone, no matter what their beliefs are, no matter where they come from, you know, so that's my view.
I don't think we get very far if we're being judgmental or hateful, so my stance is we respect beliefs and we allow...
Please speak loudly.
I'm sorry, I'm a loud speaker. Seven o'clock when it's bath time, it's a little longer. I said I don't, I don't believe in coming from a position of judgment or hate or anything along those lines. I think we need to be respectful of people's beliefs, and that needs to go every way. That can't be just respectful of some voices and not respectful of others. So I think, I think keeping that in mind, I'm not super familiar with the particular program you're talking about. I've heard snippets about it. I've also heard snippets of other programs that have been really well-received by outgoing seniors. So I think having, having those curriculum or those teachings in place that teach acceptance or at least respect of different lifestyles, different values, I think that's important. And I think allowing students to have their own values is just as important.
One of the hallmarks of our democracy is, as federal law states, a free and appropriate public education for all. And so because we believe, as a part of our democracy, that all students are entitled to free and appropriate public education, that means we need to make a school be a place where all students can learn, can receive positive socialization and nurture from positive adults, teachers, and others in their lives. I applaud the district for using Character Strong, for focusing on character education, whether it's that particular curriculum or what it might be. And I know that our staff and administrators, our teachers, continue to evaluate whether Character Strong is the means to do that or not, but I applaud the commitment to making school a place where every child in our community can receive nurturance and education.
Discrimination has no place at school for any reason. And we need to accept everyone, and it means I believe we judge people on their performance, not on their views. We check them out, we listen to them, and we respect them for their values. In that case, everyone should be treated the same. Doesn't mean that we stepped too far, went overboard, but we need to be fair to everyone. Fairness, in my opinion, is the most important part, that we accept everyone for what they are and judge them on what they're saying.
So I'm also not very well-versed in the program that you're stating, but I've heard a little bit about it. But as a lot of other people have said already, I, I believe also that it is not, it's not okay for our kids to walk into school and not feel safe. And so I think that discrimination should not be here. And I also believe that it's not my place as a board member, a possible board member, to bring an agenda to anything. I want to make sure that we're hearing all voices, all backgrounds, and really including as many as we can. That's really our goal here, right, in our education. In our mission statement, our school mission statement says to provide a responsible and comprehensive education, and then at the end, it says to send out happy and confident students into the world. And I think that it should be our main focus.
Hi, I'm Tanya O'Connor. I'm a lifelong resident of Laugville. I have been, I have been a high school English teacher at Carthage Central School, though. To piggyback off that question, I just, and this will go to one specific person, but I'd like everybody to elaborate maybe on their viewpoint as well. On Facebook, I asked about the separation of church and state, and Cheyenne said that, and I quote, "I believe that if we're looking to a public school in New York State to teach our children any set of values, we're looking in the wrong place," end quote. So we just got done hearing a little bit about your views on values, and I'd like you to, first of all, Cheyenne, to elaborate on what you meant by New York State public schools aren't teaching any values, and then everybody else can join in on the separation of church and state.
Right, and I, I know a little bit of a misquote. Social media is not the place to have those discussions, and so maybe I should have just not responded at all. What I meant by that is the first place the values need to come from is our parents. If we're not looking in the mirror and saying, yes, I tell my children to be good people, then, then we're failing already. So that, that was the intent of that statement. Obviously, I wouldn't be running for a public school board if I didn't believe in public school. I had an amazing public school experience when I was in public school. My children are in public school. If I wanted to be pigeon-potting my children into a particular viewpoint, I'd be running for a private school board or I'd be opening a private school. So to say that I don't think public school can teach any values is a misquote and a misrepresentation of how I feel. Public school can provide a wide breadth of things that, that we as parents don't know everything. So I think public school is, is more than appropriate to be sharing different worldviews. I think first and foremost, as parents, we need to be looking in the mirror and saying, all right, am I raising good children? Is that good?
If that's your answer.
I also answered your question on Facebook, that I'm not running off of a political form at all. I'm strictly running to be a voice for everyone here at Laugville Academy and also for our community, and so, yeah, I feel like I really answered your question there and how I feel about that.
I didn't get to answer your question on Facebook. You must not have dug deeply enough to find me, which is, which is kind of a relief, maybe. But I do want to say that I absolutely believe in the separation of church and state. I believe that as a person of faith, and I am a person of faith, that you can be informed by and you can act upon your faith while still realizing, again, another hallmark of our democracy, that the state exists to do what the state exists to do, and the church exists to do what the church exists to do. And it's a protection for both the church and the state, quite honestly, to maintain that separation. And while I am a person of faith that will always be informed by that, I don't feel that, I feel that I need to be careful with that when I'm in a setting serving the entire community, which is what we do on our school board.
I'm sorry?
Did you get your Facebook?
No. Nope, she got me in person. She got me in person. I actually went door to door.
I was waiting for the talk.
I'm old school. I've been out campaigning. Saw a lot of people. Got 550 signatures. The bottom line is, I've always believed in the separation of church and state. I sent my children to a private Catholic school because I felt I needed them to have that additional help. I'm not saying that I failed, but I know that I'm not perfect. But once they got to high school, that's different. We allow all sorts of different views. Our Constitution, our Declaration of Independence calls everyone created equal, and I believe in that. And based on equality, we don't, we don't impose our beliefs on anyone else. And I firmly believe in that and always have. And I would point out that while I expect that we get most of our, we get a good portion of our values from our family, there's no question we get a great deal from school and the teachers. I'm the son, the child of a teacher. I still learn from that teacher, even though she's been retired for 30 years. She lives down in my basement. She calls me Donna.
She's a great basement.
And I see her every night, and she teaches me something every day. And I know that that same thing happens every day our children go to school. It's not one teacher, it's many. And I believe that values are ingrained and standard that we often get from our children. And my children are successful because of the values that they not only got from their home, but from the institution. And I'll never forget them.
I also believe in the separation of church and state. I'm not running on any agenda. I believe that values start at home. I believe they start as us as parents, teaching our kids what's right and wrong. You know, and that's, that's how I live my life, and that's how I'm going to continue to do with my children. I certainly am not perfect. I'm not, no. I guess I, I just, I believe in that, my value system that I have with my children.
So it is 6:30, but I'm going to leave. One more question, if anybody? Oh, okay. We'll do two. We'll do Lauren and then Chris.
She would have punched me. I don't want to fight.
This will be rapid fire, so keep your answers to like 30, 45 seconds.
Yes, mine, it can be very short answered. Just so you know, I started coming to Lawville Academy about the time they centralized in '54. Do the arithmetic if you want. But, and then graduated '67, and my children were here from the '70s through '91. I worked here from '84 till I kind of skipped and went back to college after taking a 20-year break, and became, came back to be a math teacher, and I substituted after I retired, which has been 15 years. I still help. So I've been around Lawville Academy a lot of years. And, and I don't want to pick on anybody, and I don't know who came up with the sign, but three of you have a sign on State Street that says, "Make Lawville Academy Great Again." When was it great compared to today? There were some issues. I mean, when I was in school, girls didn't get to play sports. They, they didn't get to use the gym after school. So it wasn't always great there. Somewhere in between, but is there something you feel personally for people? I don't know who, if you're really behind that or that what you're feeling. What would you, one or two things that you would focus on that could help us reach a greatness from sometime in the past? And, you know, I understand if you just want to say whatever. Okay. Thank you.
So I heard you the grapevine that Donna Smith was going to put up signs, just one of, the names being one of mine. I did not know anything else of what she was going to write. That is my honest truth. I did not. So I don't, that's not something that I'm believing in at all. The only thing, and I've said this, I said it before in an earlier question, the only thing I think we could be stronger in is our communication between the community and our school. That's the only thing.
My name goes on the sign, so I'll stand up as well. I didn't know what the content of any signage was going to be. That's one thing I'm learning in this, this little race, is that you can't control what people are going to say for you or against you. So there's that. I, I do strongly feel I can work on relationship building and community building.
I too was contacted by the Smiths, and they said they wanted to put something together, and I was all for them supporting, supporting me, the content, I didn't know. As far as what I would do to make things great is, again, communication, which has been said, but I feel like I have that ability to bring people together. I've shown experience in that already, working in school districts, how I've been able to bring teachers and other groups of people together and students together through what I do in schools, through the food department. And I feel like I can give something to the board in that sense where I can help bring togetherness, because I feel that's something that's lacking. Not just the communication, but just feeling that sense of being important, whether you are in the food department or a bus driver or custodial staff. I feel like every single person in the school district is just as important, whether you're administration, teacher, it doesn't matter. The kids don't see the difference. They see, when I grew up in the school system, some of my biggest memories were of the custodial staff that were my biggest mentors. And so I feel like everybody is important in the school district.
Go ahead, Mrs. Mooney.
Hi.
I don't get to answer the question?
Oh, sorry.
Because I'm going to be blunt. Lawville is great, always has been and always will be. People talk about a lack of communication. People talk to me constantly and ask questions, and I go out. I've spent the last five weeks walking the streets of Lawville and the other communities and talking to people. We do communicate. To suggest we don't is a fallacy, and I'm getting a little upset. Hi? Because I'm tired of people saying we don't. We work hard. We listen. We do the job. This community is great. We, the board, are a reflection of the community. We do communicate, and we've done a good job. And Lawville is great. I know. I'm, I'm fortunate to be here because of Lawville. My children have great jobs because of Lawville. This community has done a great job for this school. We graduate 99% of our students. We produce. It is a great school. Not again. It is now and will continue to be.
Mrs. Dunkelking, I think just by where your position in the room...
I have one more question to get to.
I know, you may not be able to see, but one of the things that's great tonight is I see a few students in our audience, and one of our students wanted to ask a question.
And that's why I wanted to get to him. And then just, what student ever asked a question or something like that? Mrs. Mooney, go ahead.
Okay. I agree, Mike. This is a brilliant community, a wonderful district. I have two unbelievably great kids right now because they graduated this building. But I would like to ask the panel, there are some of our faculty members who would like to include creationism in the science curriculum. Would you support that?
That's easy, yes or no? That'll be fast. Yes or no?
No.
I think curriculum decisions ultimately need to be filtered through administration before they come to the board. I would, I would like to hear from administration on their suggestion before I would venture to make a decision on that.
My first response is no, although I think that there may be some room for that in state law, and again, that would be a question to have our administrators help educate us on.
I agree. It would have to come from the administrators for us to even look at it, to fully decide.
And I agree too. My first response would probably be no, but I would definitely want to listen to administration and hear what they would have to say and learn a little bit more about it before I would make an informed decision.
That was really good, guys.
And last one. Miss Baker.
With the growing population of Hispanic students at Lawville who speak little to no English, how do you plan to adequately educate them while also adjusting them to a new social situation?
I'm sorry, I don't project well, so I'm going to stand up again and be quick. My husband, when he taught first grade, actually had an experience where he had a student come who spoke only Spanish. And he fortunately has had some background in Spanish because of Lawville Academy. I don't even think he took any Spanish in college, to be honest. And so he was able to communicate with this poor student who was just thrown into a completely English-speaking classroom. And thank goodness that he happened to be there for her. I think we need more of that. I think we need more teachers who are bilingual or at least have some background, because this poor little first grade girl could have been cast by the wayside. So we need more of that. We need more of that every day.
That's a great question, and it's been on our agenda as a board for years and continues to be. We certainly have the desire to have more Spanish-fluent folks working in our school. And also, I would encourage you students in the audience that it might be something to pursue as a career, because we've had a hard time finding people who are certified in, with English as a second language. I think there's a new acronym coming out now, but, so hopefully, we will be successful in recruiting a candidate to our school to serve in that.
I definitely think we should be reaching out to students that are coming in. I think, I don't know if it's possible, you know, I've never been on the board yet, but to put in place things for our teachers to possibly learn, even some phrases and things like that, would be very helpful, just to start the ball with, with relationship with their students, I think could be very helpful. Again, I don't know how to put that in place exactly until I get there, but that's, yeah, definitely needs to happen.
I'm not sure what we have in place currently for these students. Possibly we could even have the students in the high school that are learning Spanish working with elementary teachers, so it could be a learning process on both, and, I mean, as a start, but it does sound like it's a need that we need in our district.
Ken.
Once again, probably trying to keep me under control of the board. We could take advantage of the BOSI's programs, the BOSI's, there are closures that allow it. The other thing we need to look at is when we hire aides and others, that's a talent we'd like to see them have. And obviously, that's the type of talent that would move them up the ladder, if they can speak more than one language. Those are the type of people we can move in and out of classrooms, so that if we have Spanish-speaking students or other, you know, in different classrooms but don't need all the time, we can move them around. I think that's one place we have to look, and it's a trait, which people who are looking to get a part-time job or get a, you know, any type of assistance job, that's the type of attribute that would help them get that job.
So Olivia Baker, for those of you who don't know, achieved the coveted seal of biliteracy. Is that just last year? It was like ages ago. So maybe she'll go and be our next ESL teacher. All right. I'm sure we have a lot of questions, but thank you. And I appreciate your time and willingness to come. It's an uncomfortable situation sometimes. You all did a great job, and remember, the election is on the 16th, between 12 and 8:00. And also, you'll be voting on the budget, which I'm going to present now. So if you'd like to stay around, please do, but otherwise, you can stay or find a seat or, thank you very much.
Thank you.